I think we're going there.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting in order. This is Thursday, November 12th. We're gonna call city council meeting. I think Pastor Williams is gonna provide us with an indication. Correct. Yeah, we can step up. I think now he's got the mic.
Bless you, Father. Father, we come to you this evening first thanking you for your many blessings upon us. We thank you for your protection that you've given us. We pray now that as we are going into the city council meeting, we pray for your wisdom. We pray for your guidance. But most of all, we ask that you will continue to bless our city leaders as they make decisions on how to lead our city. And we pray that you will infuse them with wisdom and insight on how to make Fountain Inn even the better than what it is. God, we pray that you will continue to lead in God our footsteps and everything that we shall do. And we pray that it will bring you great pleasure and honor. For us in Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Your man.
Please don't pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. I just wanna say I have the Veterans Day to everybody. They like this city council meeting, but I forgot to celebrate a little bit around the community. Thank you all for your service. I don't believe anyone signed up for a public comment. So we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from October 8th on October 29th. The Mary financial report is their motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I heard Mr. Thompson. Yeah, and second, Mr. Clemmer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Bell, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Give you an update on a few things that we have going on. One is our phase two of our wayfinding signage project. The downtown parking and gateway sign locations have been staked. You might have seen some of those signs around town. The actual signs are currently being fabricated now. Should be installed in not too much longer. On Election Day, the Lawrence County Capital Sales Tax Referendum was approved by the Lawrence County voters. Fifty-eight percent of the vote. Fountain Inn is the recipient of two of the 16 projects that were on that referendum list. One being overall project of improving parks in Lawrence County. Sanctified Hill Park will be renovated and updated to include new playground equipment, picnic shelter and picnic tables, new basketball goals, new landscaping and seal coating the basketball court. We're gonna take a look at the pricing to see about getting maybe the city paying the difference to have that as a concrete basketball court rather than just seal coating it. And then also over our exit, on exit 22 off I-385, that's gonna be upgraded to enhance traffic flow and minimize congestion. That project alone is almost a million dollars worth of improvements. We have the Merry Market coming up this Saturday. This will be the second one from 11:00 to 5:00 p.m. over at the Farmer's Market Commerce Park. We have a Shops and Hops event that we hope to be an annual event going forward. That's gonna be on Small Business Saturday, November 28th from 4:00 to 7:00 in downtown. Be similar to a Sippin' Shop. We also have our Tree Lighting Rudolph Run and Fireworks Display on December 5th in Commerce Park. It's gonna be starting at 6:00 p.m. We will have a live band that evening. We have received an exemption from the Department of Commerce for that. We have our Chamber of Commerce Annual Christmas Parade on December 9th, starting at 5:30 p.m. And then our Carriage Rides will begin nightly on December 10th and will go through December 20th. It is 10 days this year, so that's a little bit less in length. But we will run the Carriage Rides every single night through that 10-day period. Whereas in the past, we've taken some breaks throughout the week. We'll have an animal exhibit on December 10th through the 13th. And then on the 18th, we will have Craven Mellon. And on the 19th, the Song Band. So even with COVID, we have quite a bit of good festivities planned for this Christmas season. Public Works Department has already started decorating the town and City Hall, and it's starting to look festive. And Parks and Rec, they have concluded their fall sports season, which included baseball, softball, volleyball, flag and tackle football. And then basketball registration has concluded. We had 224 participants sign up this year. So despite the pandemics, it was actually one of the largest registration classes in the last nine years. And then the Rudolph Run Registration is currently open. That will close on December 3rd. And again, that event is gonna be held on December 5th. Public Works, through the Greenville Legislative Delegation Transportation Committee Municipal Match Program, Quail Run Trail and Partridge Point Resurfacing has been completed. We are receiving bids next week for the $750,000 worth of sewer rehab work. If you remember, that 500 of that is coming from the Rural Infrastructure Authority. That was a grant that we received and had a 50% match. So we are adding $250,000 worth of funds to go to sewer rehab, and that was budgeted. And then the recycling route has been split up into two days, every other Monday and Tuesday. And I have in your packets attached two maps. One map is showing the Monday Route in red, and the blue is the Tuesday Route. And then also, for a nice visual for people who don't know where their regular trash, weekly trash route is, or what day of the week it is, rather, we have a map showing different color for each day of the week. Over at HR, on the recruitment side, we have two non-certified police officers starting on November 23rd. And we just had two installation and maintenance technicians in the Natural Gas Department that started on Monday. And we are currently advertising for two CDL drivers. Related with that that I skipped over in Public Works is that we did receive one of the two new trash trucks that we budgeted for. We received the debris truck this week, and the new garbage truck should be here by the end of November. Back to HR, one of the projects that Rebecca Ward is working on is is already looking at our health insurance renewal for next year. Based on employee feedback, staff is strongly considering the state health plan for our city's health insurance provider for next year. We'd like to hold a work session with council in December to kind of go over some of those details, some of the pros and cons, and start talking about the financial implications of that. Chamber of Commerce has a clay shooting tournament next week, November 19th, starting at 1:00 p.m. over at the Clinton House. The Yount Center for Performing Arts has several shows planned in November and December. Vinyl Junkies on November 13th, John Connolly November 19th. They have a musical comedy, the December 11th through the 13th, and the Ball Brothers on December 19th. And then lastly, the annual Rotary Turkey Shoot will be on November 21st at 9:00 a.m.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions for Mr. Bell?
Just a comment. I would like to commend our Public Works for fantastic job they've been doing. They've been understaffed. Not getting any of the prisoners from the system due to COVID. And those guys are just hustling. So they're doing a great job.
Yes, sir. I also saw your hanging task, Mr. Bell.
Oh.
Yes.
Awesome. I haven't been downtown recently. I need to go up.
I had a, got a, Mr. Bell, I mean, at some point, I can talk to you, I think there might be some additional ways we can support Sanctified Hill Park with some of the state delegation. I had a conversation with Pastor Williams.
Okay.
And we're gonna be putting out a big announcement about a Christmas festival, right? Kind of, I think it's all, we've got all the marketing kind of queued up.
We have. Sent it to the Greenville News, and in one of their recent articles that I saw online, talking about all the Christmas festivities in the upstate, they listed all of those for Fountain Inn. And they also had an article about parades that weren't canceled, and Fountain Inn was included in that.
Anything else? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to unfinished business. First up, this second reading, 2020-005, the Senate Ordinance. I see a motion. No, Mr. Bell, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance authorizing and establishing an economic development incentive program to encourage private investment in the incentive area of the city of Fountain Inn. This ordinance formally establishes what economic development incentives the city of Fountain Inn would potentially provide, what types of businesses the city would potentially incentivize, where that private investment must be located, and other benchmark criteria to make a project eligible. It also standardizes the process for applying for these incentives. To be noted, there are no changes from first to second reading. This ordinance does not include the reinvestment incentive program that we discussed at our October 12th special call meeting. As an organization, I feel we have further details that need to be ironed out before we can get that grant program up and running. The established incentives for this ordinance involve rebates of sewer tap fees, building permit fees, business license fees and hospitality tax fees. To qualify for these incentives, the, excuse me, the development must have a minimum threshold investment of $1 million. The development may be given credit towards the minimum investment of $50,000 for each full-time equivalent job created. These economic development incentives can only be given after an incentive agreement has been entered, which does require city council approval.
Is there a motion to approve on second reading, 2020-005, the Senate Ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Black. So any question, comments, discussion? When we look at the reinvestment thing again, we will, it'll be an amendment to this most likely, you think?
Yeah, I think so. We, the plan is not necessarily to codify this into our code, so it doesn't necessarily need to be an amendment. I think another ordinance like that should reference this, but it doesn't necessarily need to be an amendment.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving on second reading, 2020-005, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is second reading, Z 2020-002, rezoned F R D. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance for second reading, rezones approximately 10.39 acres from S1 Service District to F R D Flexible Review District. Planning Commission voted in favor of the rezoning in a 3-2 vote at our September 14th meeting. The proposed community, Fairview Cottages, will consist of 54 detached, single-family residential homes. A portion of the development will consist of rear-loaded lots, which will be accessed using proposed alleys. The remainder of the lots will be standard front-facing garage units. Sidewalks are included along the interior roads. The exterior the exterior building materials will be at a minimum, fiber cement may also consist of brick, stone or cedar shake. The proposed development includes approximately three acres of active and passive common area. The entrance drives located off Fairview Street Extension and Old Fairview Road will be landscaped and contain an entrance monument for the neighborhood. Vegetative screening and/or fencing will be provided between the development and the adjacent industrial property. Screening will also be provided between the existing overhead power easement and the lots, as well as along the eastern side of the Pocket Park. That I recommend approval on second reading.
So a motion to approve on second reading, Z 2020-002. Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Is there questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving on second reading, Z 2020-002, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We've been running along. New business, first reading of ordinance, A X 2020-002, annexed 60 acres on Clinton Street. Mr. Bell?
And I believe that ordinance number is A X 2020-006 for first reading. This is an ordinance to annex approximately 60 acres on Northwoods Drive into the city limits of Fountain Inn. Zone the three tax map parcels to C2 Commercial District and assign the three parcels to Council Ward 1. Planning Commission voted unanimously in favor of the annexation and zoning to C2 Commercial at our November 9th meeting. These parcels are surrounded by city limits on three sides to the northeast and west in what is essentially a donut hole or enclave. The parcels have visibility from I-385 in what some would describe as the city's front door coming from Greenville. The applicant has marketed these parcels as a small industrial development for quite some time, but the constraints of the parcel's shape and size, the former lagoon, the Duke Energy Right-of-Way and the gas line right-of-ways have proven difficult. The applicant has expressed a desire for a large mixed-use development containing a considerably large investment in our community. The applicant's development partner currently has two large mixed-use developments underway in Greenville. With that, I'd recommend approval on first reading.
Is there a motion to approve on first reading, 2020-006? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Black. So any discussion or questions?
Where exactly is this?
On this zoning map over here, the, one of the three parcels is indicated by this red pushpin. The other parcel is here and here. It's for reference, the baby, former baby plant is right here, and the firming plant is over there.
So it's the big field with the left and the baby plant.
It's where our turkey shoot is scheduled to be at.
There'll be time to discuss more about what mixed use is going to look like.
We can ask that question now, but yeah, there'll be a second reading as well.
There is, I would say that that is the the idea behind zoning to C2. I guess the one con is the fact that there is a number of uses. It's probably our zoning category in the city that allows for the most. So any uses permitted in our R12, R10, R7 and a half, R M and C1 districts are allowed in C2, along with several pages worth of potential uses that can be allowed by right in a C2 commercial zone.
So this, I believe the intent of the application is a mixed use to dump. Because it's C2, to Sean's point, that is not what they're legally bound to as in an F R D or P D. For instance, but they have every intent of doing mixed use, and they have a few projects underway. It's like a similar style, I would say, maybe. I don't know about exact use.
Staff has not seen any proposed renderings or anything like that. But we do have other instances in the city of residential development in C2.
Could we ask to see some sort of plan?
Not for a zone to C2. That would be what they call a design district, in which the planning commission and city council would be able to see some of that on the front end. That would be your flexible review district or plan development.
Would they be willing to come in and present what they plan to do verbally?
The applicant is in attendance. That's up to the mayor if he wants to allow it, or if they're prepared to speak.
Yeah, if they're prepared to speak, then they're obviously welcome to talk on the front end of the lot. I was at the planning commission meeting, and they pretty much mentioned mixed-use development, shops and restaurants, and that's about all the detailing was provided then, too. So if they were, I mean, if council would like, then they're welcome to. If you'd like to say something on that.
Well.
Here's the thing, guys. I have a feeling they're gonna do this project with or without us. There's us, gonna bring it to town, into city limits tonight. Let's vote on that, and then we've got 30 days to next month to come back and think, prepare to speak or something. There's nothing, has to be, first ring's not gonna make or break this.
I'm on board with that. That makes a lot of sense, but I would like to have some more information about what this is going to look like. We've, we've got a few things to get through that are not that appealing.
That is, what you're saying, Jay, it's still gonna be there regardless if it's in the city.
Yeah, they're gonna do whether we're involved or not, so.
And it's geared towards commercial, which is what we've been, have we not been wanting some business?
Yeah, I mean, commercials. Yes. Personally, yes.
I was just curious.
Yeah. Yeah. So we'll go ahead and take action on this tonight, and then if staff's able to get some more detail for council or guidance or something, that would be, that would be helpful. If not, we'll discuss this for, all right. So anything else for this first reading? I've seen any? All in favor of approving on first reading, annexation of 2020-006, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is Clinton Newberry Natural Gas Authority. Mr. Bell?
Mr. Mayor, you've got ordinance 2020-007.
No, let's skip that one. I'm sorry. 2020-07. Toss the towel, I'm trying to go too fast tonight, I'm sorry. Ms. Naoko, at this rate, I think you were gonna take this one correctly.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. The ordinance you have in front of you is an amendment to the Section 18-5 of the Fountain Inn Municipal Code regarding hospitality tax. This amendment will clarify and define the department responsible for collecting and enforcing the ordinance. It will define establishments. It will clarify due dates and restate the penalties for the late tax, for late tax filings to include penalties for anything late. We are currently struggling, staff is struggling with defining a late or postmarked remittances. And it will also remove the $500 administrative fee. Establishments as defined should remit the 2% tax collected on behalf of the city by the 20th of each month. When the city receives payment after that stated due date, we have to assess a $500 administrative fee and a 1.5% penalty for each day the payment is late. That costs a burden on staff. We don't know, we have a struggle, especially during these times, charging $500 for a remittance that's turned in on the 21st. And so we'd like to clarify that this ordinance with this amendment to change that penalty from 1.5% to 5% and remove the $500 late fee. The penalty is consistent with the cost to compensate the city for additional administrative handling and the lost earnings on operating balances. I mean, and also, this amendment also states that the late fee cannot be waived by city staff. This amendment provides guidance that will allow staff to consistently and fairly enforce the ordinance by establishing a timeline to pursue delinquent filings and what will lead to the issuance of a uniform ordinance summons and a revocation of business license, should it come to that. That will start on the 30th day after the due date. We hope that this amendment will pass for the benefit of staff, current and future establishments responsible for collecting this tax, and make it easy to do business in the city of Fountain Inn. You also have in your packet the ordinance, and it's with strike through, so you can see what's been changed. We're direct.
Thank you. Before we hit the discussion and questions, there are a motion to approve on first reading, ordinance 2020-007.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Cunningham. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I just, I just wanna say that one of the other things this does is it makes it abundantly clear that it is a violation of the business license not to pay the tax one it's due. So it lets the business owner know that if you don't pay the tax, then not only can you get a summons. In other words, what we've tried to do is we put in black and white what we've been doing, so that there's no question about that. And it did take out the $500 penalty. But it's, but it also eliminates the requirement that staff send all these letters. It just says you owe the tax. If you don't, this is what's going to happen. And we just tried to clarify and streamline on stuff.
Thank you for this. I think it's a great change for us. Some instances have $500 fees, sometimes more than the tax that businesses may owe. So if they're just 24 hours or an hour late, it seems like a steep penalty. So I appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving ordinance 2020-007 on first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Up next is Clinton Newberry Natural Gas Authority. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. This is approval of Clinton Newberry Natural Gas Authority's Interconnect Project Phase 1. Natural Gas Department had proposed a two-phase project to provide a second fee, or a second gas fee to our system. We solicited bids for the design, construction and installation of a new gas interconnecting station between Fountain Inn Natural Gas and Clinton Newberry Natural Gas. The purpose of that station is to provide a back feed to the entire natural gas system in the event of an emergency shutdown by our current gas supplier or other types of emergency that may compromise the delivery of gas to our over 9,800 customers. A low bid of $93,100 was submitted by I G M or Ideal Gas Measurement. Also, there will be an additional $15,000 to $20,000 for miscellaneous incidentals, not part of the bid, but necessary to complete the work, such as security fencing, station protection, establishing electrical service, inlet and outlet valve installations, and computer hardware and software. The cost for this station came well below the $200,000 that we budgeted for this project. And then if approved and we get this built, phase two would be to install 5,200 feet of a six-inch high-pressure steel line that would connect the station at an estimated cost of $650,000. And phase two, if approved, is scheduled for completion November of 2021.
Is there a motion to approve the Interconnect Station?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Any comments or questions?
Where is, exactly is this gonna connect, Mr. Bell?
There is a picture in your packet.
Okay.
Over off Huntsbridge Road and Ridge Crest Drive.
Okay, I see it now. Yeah.
So the land is already there. That's owned by Clinton Newberry. We just have to build this station.
This is already in the budget this year. You're just looking to award the bid essentially?
Correct.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor of approving Clinton Newberry Natural Gas Interconnect, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Planning Commission, and I guess you'll take both of the sentences. Planning Commission in order with zoning, and we'll take two votes on it.
Yeah, that'd be fine, Mayor. We have two vacancies on our planning commission. One is Wendell Tumbler in Ward 4 is turned out. And then also Catherine Spence, representing Ward 1, resigned due to scheduling conflicts. And we have two people interested from those wards. One, for Ward 1, Walt Tanner. He's a pastor here at Capsome Church, and previous to his pastor life, he was an architect. And also Sarah Threet is a local business owner and lives over in the Timberland Trail subdivision, representing Ward 4. Both expressed an interest in serving on the planning mission.
Yeah, go ahead. You mentioned the BCA folks.
Sure. And then we have Jackie Johnson, who needs to be reappointed for another term. She's actually currently our chairperson of the Board of Zoning Appeals. And then Bill Patterson and Patrick Keith, both chosen not to continue serving. And so Nelson Dever, who also lives in the Timberland Trail subdivision. And then also Avis Kelly, lives over on Woodland Drive, have both expressed a desire to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Still due. Planning Commission, first, is there a motion to approve the appointments of Walt Tanner and Sarah Threet to the planning commission?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Black. So all, any discussion or questions, sorry? All in favor of appointing Walt and Sarah to the planning commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. In the Board of Zoning Appeals, there are motion to appoint Nelson Dever, Avis Kelly, and reappoint Jackie Johnson to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Terry Berry. All those in favor, any discussions, sorry? All those in favor of appointing Nelson Dever and Jackie? All those in favor of appointing Nelson Dever and Jackie, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We are now going to go into an executive session for the receipt of legal advice concerning a pending claim against the city and other matters covered by attorney-client privilege related thereto, and the discussion of the city's position in regards to the claim of a pending possession of counsel, and that will be discussed during executive session through their motion to go into the executive session.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. All in favor going to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We're now in executive session.
Thank you.